Give that, uh, as it relates to just simply giving a report for the sake of giving a report, I don't think that that's necessary.
Okay.
When can we, when could we expect to have in writing the duties or responsibilities for these committees?
I will work on that. I will work on that for you, Mrs. Owen. I will work on that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for all of council. I guess that takes us to one segment of the, uh, meeting here. We're now moving, um, according to the agenda, we now move over to the public comment. And only for the agenda item only, you have a three-minute limit to, uh, speak. So if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, now is the time to, uh, flag in. Randy, I guess you're gonna take care of that one.
Yeah, I, I, Mr. Pove.
Yes, I would like to.
I'm, I'm not sure who said that.
I did. Mr. Gosson.
Go ahead, Mr. Gosson.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, we're gonna have a, an engineer's report tonight.
We have one, yes.
We do, and, and was the engineer gonna be delivering that, or is that something in writing?
Uh, well, we do have something that has been given to us in writing. Uh, we don't. I don't, I don't have a hard copy at this moment, or did you put it far on my desk tonight? Cause I did not get a hard copy in my packet here.
Okay.
It's a matter of fact, it just actually came through today, so, um.
That's probably why.
Yeah.
Can you see if, um, Michael's on? Is, is, is Michael Francher on?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
And, and, well, as, and actually, and follow up to that, and, and we would also be expecting a, uh, zoning report and, and an animal control report. Tonight?
So, we have, uh, zoning officers' report, yes. Generally, we don't nor- normally get a, uh, uh, yeah, we do get an animal report. I'm sorry, we do get an animal report. They just simply, uh, put a listing of people or who they have, uh.
Calls that they've made.
Yeah, but you know something? We don't have that in this package here.
It may not have been.
Mr. Gosson, if I may ask, what is?
Well, I, I guess what, I, I, I'm interested in those reports, so if we have them, I'd like to have them maybe read. Or if the, you know, the person that would be delivering it is, is available to us now, if they could be read out loud for the record. Uh, i- if, if possible, then we would be aware of what.
I have the zoning offices' report that's quite voluminous. You really would like me to read all of that out? We've never done that ever before. We've never read out any of our reports. We have them on file. If you'd like to get a copy of it, anybody is welcome to get a copy of anything and, uh, we just simply make it one to, uh, get a copy of it.
I understand what to get. I, 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 I understand what to read, uh, how to get one.
And, Mr. Goslin, uh, if I may, I'm, uh, Judd Moore. If you'd like to stop by or make an appointment tomorrow, uh, and see, uh, Ms. Seelman who's here, she can make copies if you give.
I see.
If that would be okay.
Mr. Mister, can I just have, have a concern regarding a particular issue? I mean, we can make quick work of this if there's something in particular you want to tell about.
You asked me about all the reports that we have inside.
I, I, I'm, 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 I'm interested in, 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 in those reports, yes. So, yeah, I'll, I'll be happy to pick them up.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Mr. Poe. Free Poe.
Thank you, Randy. Um. First question is, is that under new business, there's listed closed session personnel? Is that still happening?
Sorry, taking care of.
Okay, so that was just the solicitor and that was it? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Oh, by the way, let me first say Happy New Year. I didn't say that before. Uh. Also, for going back to landfill engineer, just to clarify, um, what had been the situation with CME, cause I wasn't sure they had been appointed before. Is there a relationship between CRE, I mean, sorry, CME and land, and, uh, land control consultants, LCC, or LRS?
None whatsoever that I'm aware of. That would be a shock to hear that.
No, I didn't. I'm just, just asking the question for clarification, okay? Um, for the fund commissioner, alternate fund commissioner, who are they now? I mean, is that Judd and Teresa, or?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, and I think that might, oh, well, I'm gonna make what is seriously a humble and hopefully helpful thought on the whole committee thing. Legislative committees exist in a city council form in order to make recommendations of legislation, because you're not a township committee and certainly not a commission where each member is responsible for a particular department. So, instead of allowing inertia to keep the same structure in place, it may be better to just have assignments handed out based on both need as well as the gifts and graces of particular member or members of council. Um. Rather than try to get into, well, here's the job description of particular things. I mean, other than public safety and finance, you have to have those. Um. You know, or planning municipal council of representation. I'm not sure how Betsy and Julie will feel about that as that goes on, but maybe it won't be done with Zoom anyway. But it may be better just to prune that whole thing back and just have it be that committees are appointed or people take up the task as needed rather than we have this whole list of committees that do relatively little and then people aren't sure what happens and then if there's an issue, then potentially that appointment gets rescinded or revoked, which just then creates a whole lot of adjective for no good purpose. Humble suggestion, don't have to do anything with it, but I'm trying to be helpful with that and not really trying to hurt anybody with it. Figure that's actually something that makes it easier for everybody, but on that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And Carol, Happy New Year, since I just see you come on.
Happy.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to, um, um?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Carol, and I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't know your last name. Hi, sir.
Hi, I'm, it's Carol at Fominen Company, Carol McAllister. I just wanted to jump on and say Happy New Year to everyone and and look forward to working with you again in 2021. Well, I appreciate your confidence in me and the firm.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the, uh, anyone else in the public?
I don't see anyone there and there's no chat.
No chat. I make a motion to, uh, close the public. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any votes?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Brown, are you on?
Before we move on. Before we move on, um, can I just make a request to, um, Mr. Moore if he could send at least me a list of who has what committees, so I have the names, cause it was, we went through it pretty quick.
Yes, I will do that perhaps on Friday or Saturday when I'm in.
That's fine, that's fine.
Just hand it out to everybody, please.
Yeah, to everyone.
Thank you. Mike, are you on? Mike Brown?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you and, um, I guess you're gonna give your engineer's report?
Yes, I have the, uh, engineer's report dated January sixth. Um, in regards to the city hall improvements, um, they've been completed for a while. The contractor has the closed-out documents, so once we have them, go forward on to the city, process the final payment. Um, Beach and Twelve, that project's been closed out. The DOT has all of the paperwork. They've sent me a request today that they are requesting, uh, the cancelled checks, um, that were paid to the contractor. So, once they have them, um, I emailed Judd, um. Once I get a copy of those, I'll send them to DOT and they will issue the remaining, uh, twenty-five percent from the seventy-five percent voucher. Um, for the reconstruction of Fifth Avenue, um, the plans, um, the specifications have been sent to the Pine Lands. Um, they've had them for several weeks now. I haven't heard, um, back from them. Um. I did have to send the plan, the specifications and the stormwater report, uh, electronically. I did get a notification via their email that they are working on a, um, you know, a longer turnaround time, so, um, I'm gonna put a call into their office and email, just to check the status of that, um, so it's still under Pine Lands review. And we did receive a, um, an email from the DOT inquiring on the status and I replied to them and copied, um, city clerk regarding that matter indicating that the field survey, the design specifications are done. And once we have the Pine Lands approval, we'll issue the, uh, review set to their office prior to bidding the project. And then lastly, uh.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, 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 please, go ahead.
Okay, and then lastly, the, um, city received a grant for the resurfacing of Maple Avenue. Um, in the next, uh, week or so, our, our office will prepare a, uh, proposal for the land surveying, the engineering surface and the, um, bid package, um, to complete, you know, standard of all the DOT roads and submit that to council for their review and, uh.
Okay. I was, you know, I was looking through your email right here, uh, Mike, and quite honestly, I'm just, it never made any sense to me how, uh, the state was not aware of what we were doing with the, uh, Fifth Avenue project when we've been moving along Fifth Avenue project all year long.
Well, well, typically, um, this is a unique road in that, um, we have an outside agency approval that's required. All the other roads typically are, um, just submitted to the DOT for their review and approval. I think it was just more so a follow-up from the review engineer just saying, hey, please provide us the status. And typically, we don't, you know, submit any documents or anything until they're ready for their review and approval to go out to bid, so. Instead of issuing, issuing them a design set that they sign off on and then it goes, at the same time, the Pine Lands, they have revisions, it's just just cleaner to get, uh, a reviewed, um, set and send that up to the DOT for their final sign-off. So, I think it was more so an inquiry just saying, you know, just update us on where, where the project stands.
Okay. All right, so, uh, you'll have in our next meeting a, uh, proposal for us to, uh, do the field work that's required to go out there on Maple Avenue, correct?
Sure, and I'll try to get that, uh, well in advance of the meeting, so, uh, uh, council has time to review, um, several days prior to the, uh, the next meeting.
Council have anything for the, uh, engineer?
No.
Mr. Dilch? Anything for the engineer? Okay.
I do not have anything for the engineer.
Mike, thank you for your time. Uh, Happy New Year to you and hopefully we'll be able to, uh, move along with these projects and.
Yes, absolutely.
Do you have a timeline if you could in fact tell us what you think or hopefully where we, where we may be with the Fifth Avenue project? When will we actually be able to, uh, uh, be ready for putting asphalt out? Of course, we gotta put it out to bid and all that, uh, other stuff that we've done throughout the years with, uh, grants, but this one in particular, I guess there's some hangups with the, uh, uh, environmental as it relates to the re.
Right, and then, and the COVID, um, obviously has delayed things on the review aspect, but, um, I would say, um, safely, we'd, we'd have this done, um, by the summer.
You think that the project could be wrapped up and asphalt would be, uh, applied by the summer?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's a good goal. That's a good goal. We won't be able to do the, uh, Maple Avenue by, uh, by the, by the year's end, though, will we? Or will we?
I, I, I think we'll be able to get them, um, almost concurrently going on, uh, maybe a month apart and I, I don't see any reason why Maple, um, couldn't be completed by, uh, by the summer as well.
Okay. All right.
That's our goal, to have that completed by the end of this year.
I would like to see them those completed, yeah. I just hope that the Pine Lands doesn't, um, um, hold you up anymore than what they've already done.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's my goal. All right, thanks, Mike, for coming out and we'll, um.
Sure.
We'll talk soon.
No problem. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Moving over to the, uh, bill list.
Yeah, this is number eleven. One of three bills I had.
Well, you sure did add a number of them on here.
And we all came in. Does council have the updated bill list? I tried Google Docs to put them on from the.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I make a motion to pay the bill list, uh, two hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second. I'll second. Mr. Olson, I like, I think he seconded before me. Um, just one quick question, uh, Mr. Moore. With the advertising that we do, our primary paper is the Atlantic City Press or it's the Island Times-Journal?
I've been dealing with the Daily Journal out of Island only because that's what I've seen most of the ads come in. Uh, we have advertised for the press. Uh, they're both on the resolution.
And they're both the same price?
I don't know if they're the same price or not. It's hard to decide because the ads are different amounts, you know, different lengths. But like, say, the ads for reorganization meeting or second reading for the ordinances, they're like twenty-nine dollars. But we, we gotta be responsive as to what's the main paper. I don't know if many people get the newspaper.
Truthfully, I think the Atlantic City Press is the main paper, though. I'd like to see us stay with the press.
Well, I can do that more.
I, I think that that would be our primary paper if we have something that's really extra special and beyond that we need to alert everybody. But, you know, Lake City Press is Atlantic County and the Island Times-Journal, of course, is Cumberland County. And most people that I know, they all read the press. That's just my personal perspective that I am aware of.
Well, you can go online for both of them, but if you want me to, you know, I'll push toward the press first and, and use that as like our main, main source.
And they're both owned by the same company, Gannett Publications.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, yes, they're, they're both the same.
Okay.
Yeah, so they both probably have the same place. Uh, we have a motion, a second. We're gonna, if there's no further questions, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Barbara Nussia?
Yes. Moving down the line, we have, uh, department reports, we have, I don't believe that I had a.
Four minutes, getting minutes.
Meeting minutes, we have, uh, the December first and the December seventeenth meeting. I make the necessary motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Is there, I, I'm really confused why council just doesn't wanna respond.
We have correspondence. I got two items for correspondence, man.
Okay, moving over to the, let's stick to the agenda here. We have the department reports.
Now the correspondences after the minutes, what we advised for.
Correspondence, we have.
I just got a letter today from, uh, South Jersey Gas dated December twenty-ninth. And there's petitioning, obviously, for some rate increases. I believe we talked about this prior to this, but the public hearing is on January the nineteenth and they have a call-in if anyone wants to, uh, talk about this, and I do have this correspondence if, if anyone wants to, but it's a petition of the South Jersey Gas Company for approval of new energy efficient programs and associated cost recovery pursuant to the Clean Energy Act. And it was addressed to all municipal clerks. And the second thing I have, I just got this like five minutes before the meeting. Uh, it says, "Dear Clerk, the purpose of this letter is to submit a bid for the above lots. We would like to submit an offer of a hundred and fifty dollars per lot. Therefore." Here's the letter. It closes a certified check.
Yes.
For ninety dollars, thank you, representing ten percent of the amount of the offer for purchase of the lots. We understand there is a six hundred dollar attorney's fee to cover the cost of the lots and it's lots, uh, well, block sixty, says dash twenty-one on here, lots two seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three and eighty-four. Thank you, Barbara and Michael Gonzalez.
So they want additional lots.
Mayor, uh, if you recall, we, we dealt with this by way of the, uh, uh, prior actions of council. We offered those for sale, uh, at that minimum value.
That's correct. Uh, but we are, well, we were done with them at the, uh, we, we did sell them, uh, lots, correct, Randy? That's a done deal, they. These are.
These are the lots, Mayor.
These here are the lots?
Yes.
There was another transaction on block S one, another property we were talking about.
That was Mr. Custaldi, Black Holding Market.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Custaldi, and I believe that there's a, uh, Paul DeMonica that has, uh, sent a letter in over here as well.
I haven't seen that.
Yes, you did, because I sent it to you. He sent it to me and I sent it to you and I have looked at it and I have even said to you about it, that we need to have it on for the December meeting and it didn't go on, but we have Mr. Paul DeMonica there that wants to have, um, some lots also that are municipal lots that are contiguous to his and which he's the only contiguous owner.
Are those these lots that we're talking about or?
No, the one is Gonzalez. And forgive me if I'm wrong, Randy, but I thought that that was a done deal, that was over. We already, um, had the deeds prepared and all that. Uh, isn't this, were they looking to get additional lots now?
No, no, this, but remember you had to, you had to put this out via, um, resolution and we had to accept bids. This is the bid.
Oh, okay.
What we should do is, um, we should have a resolution prepared for our next meeting to, if, if it's your pleasure to accept the bid, accept the bid and then I will proceed with, uh, with the closing. Mr. Custaldi is, that's block S eight. He will be submitting the balance, uh, uh, to, to the city clerk and then I will prepare the deed and get that reported.
Okay, and.
And I don't know this other property you're mentioning, Mayor. If, if someone could please send me, first of all, I'd like the Gonzalez letter and secondly, the additional property that you just mentioned, Mayor. If you wanna send that to me, I'll look at that in conjunction with Mr. Mancini.
That's what I'll, that's what I'll do. I'm going to, uh, probably send that to you tomorrow.
That's fine.
Did I have that, I have that on my phone and I guess I've probably got like about four or five hundred emails that are in that, so let me just try to figure or find where he, uh, sent that over and I'll send it to you, Randy, okay?
That's fine, Mayor, and then I'll, I'll speak with Mr. Mancini and just, and then I'll be in a position to advise council what we need to do.
Okay. Very good. All right, so moving down the line here, we do have the, uh, court report, which I don't believe that I have a court report. I have a tax collector report, animal control. We actually, we didn't get an animal control report. No, we don't have the animal control. I don't think I even have, I do have the tax collectors. We have the clerks, the fire department, which we have in the zoning officers' report. But I don't have the, uh, the court and I don't have the tax collector and I don't have animal control. Actually, I even, I don't even think I have a, uh, city clerk's bill report.
Public Works.
Did you send a city clerk report over, Judd, or not necessarily?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay.
Finance report of what we collect.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I've asked, uh, uh, Ms. Seelman to coordinate this each month and to have their reports ready and we'll send them out by Google Docs and make you a copy for your box, Mayor. But you have to, um, you know, realize too that our meetings are on the first Wednesday and it's difficult on certain weeks for anyone, these, these people to get their reports to us because it's so close to the, um, end of the prior month, but we'll do our best to make sure everyone gets a report.
Uh, I thought I saw the clerk's report in the, in the drive.
If, uh.
Yeah, it's in there.
Oh, it is in there? Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have a hard copy of it, though, that's the thing.
Okay.
All right, so there's a motion, there's a second for the, uh, actually, I made the motion. Was there a second for the, uh, reports?
Well, I don't, that list didn't include Public Works, did it?
Public Works report has been submitted to all.
Yes, and the clerk says it probably.
I saw the Public Works in there.
Added to the.
Yeah, I saw the report, but it wasn't on the list, that, that item list.
No, it's not.
It's added to the motion.
I'll add it to the motion, the Public Works report.
Just need a second.
Okay.
You can tell me now, huh? I'm walking in one either way.
So, psyching all the reports.
I don't know if I got a second on the reports yet. I made it first. Is there a second? Please. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me, aye.
Moving down, we have, uh, new business. The, uh, closed session has been concluded. The, uh, uh, I had something that I wanted to discuss, which has already been addressed, which is the, uh, uh, fire company radios. Um, I guess in the future, what we probably really need to do, I think it's actually our responsibility, but we probably should be, uh, setting aside money into a capital fund that should be titled as, uh, Fire Company Capital Fund. Uh, that way, then when we have issues like radios that need to come up, that fund will already be there. We're currently taking this right now, the money's, uh, out of our capital account, correct, John?
Yes.
All right, so we're taking that out of our current capital account. But I think that in the, uh, very immediate future, certainly with this next budget coming in, we should dedicate some monies towards, uh, uh, capital fund exclusively for the fire company. And if it gets built up over a couple of years, then they have, uh, some cushion to be able to go back into to, uh, get, uh, extra, uh, things that they need. They do need some air packs. Can't believe that some of that stuff there that they say they're gonna just simply have to get rid of it because it's, uh, deemed expired. It doesn't make sense to me, but.
Yeah.
Just doesn't make sense.
I'd like to propose a half a million dollars for a new fire rescue pumper vehicle too, but I don't wanna shock anybody. That's just the environment in me.
Your, your job is to be the clerk, not to be there and make the motions. Good, good one, Joe, but it doesn't work.
Good one, good one, okay, okay. I tried, I tried.
Okay. Um.
Ms. Cassigran wanted to talk about the code update. I can talk with her if she's on.
Hold up a second. Hold up a second, please, Mrs. Cassigran, I'm sorry. That's old business, right?
No, we're actually into, uh, new business at the moment.
Well, the way it came down, uh, Mr. Dilch, is that, uh, I took this agenda from the prior year, but it said new business first and old business, there was no old business because this is the first meeting of the year, so that's, I, that's what I, please, just have.
Okay, I apologize. I apologize. I'm sorry for interrupting, Mrs. Cassigran.
No.
I had something for old business too.
I have something for new business, but I'll wait till after, Mrs. Cassigran.
Oh, thanks. Um, so, we heard, um, I'm the attorney, Mr. DeLucre, worked on the, uh, few questions that General Code had, um, for the final draft of the, um, ordinances and he, uh, had to change one ordinance a little bit because, um, we had a little miscommunication. Um, I talk left-handed and so he fixed it right-handed and it was well done. Um, he found a few little things, I found a few little things. We completed it on Monday. He sent it off to General Code because she had, she had been off for the holidays, so she was just back on Monday, a new editor, and, uh, it's all, um, completed and she said that she will be doing the final, um, lap. To introduce the, whatever that big, uh, way of, uh, introducing the whole thing is, it'll, it should be done. And we weren't, weren't due to have our response till February eleventh, so, uh, she was, uh, grateful that, that we got it back to her quickly. Moving along.
Well, hopefully we are moving this along and hopefully our February deadline will be, uh, in order for us to finalize this here. Long river do. Is that, is that it, Mrs. Cassagran?
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have something for new business.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Last meeting. Someone else speaking?
Okay, yes, you're on.
Last meeting, we resolved that uh we would give, effective in in short language, we would give the current acting clerk and the deputy tax collector ninety days to kinda show us their stuff with new responsibilities, et cetera, et cetera, and I think that in the effort to facilitate that.